Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, May the 1st, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Debbie Springer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated April 17, 2017. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
Nor do I. If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye as well. And the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have five pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $77,913.30. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
No, I, I'm good.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated May 1st, 2017, in the amount of $77,913.30.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye as well, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
No, I don't have any.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, May the 1st, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Debbie Springer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of our meeting dated Monday, April 17, 2017. The floor is open for questions, comments, or any corrections.
I have none, thank you.
Nor do I.
There's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes dated Monday, April 17, 2017.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Board, we'll go ahead and approve the minutes of our special meeting dated Friday, April the 28th, 2017. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
No, I, I'm good.
If there's no questions, comments, corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting dated April 28, 2017, as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. Thank you for coming to the special meeting on Friday under short notice, and thanks for your approval of getting that done. This evening, Board, we have 47 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,318,517.30. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I, I don't have anything, Mayor.
I had, just had one thing on page 12. And we, on the third one down, we paid Brown for lighting, street lighting, 9600. Does some of that go to RDC, Deb?
No, it was all coded for.
Okay.
MVH.
Okay. All right. But that was the only question I had. So, if there's no further questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated May 1st, 2017, in the amount of $1,318,517.30.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Pass that. Go real quick. Under unfinished business this evening, we have one item, and that is the 2017 Stormwater Quote Award from Westler Engineering. Brent, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. In review, we went out to four contractors for quotes for the 2017 Drainage Improvements project. Two contractors responded with quotes, Smith Projects, Inc., and Russell Excavating, Inc. We reviewed those quote packages. The total price of those quotes were only about $170 apart. But in our review of the quote packages, we determined that Russell Excavating, their quote package, was incomplete. It was missing the financial statement. Based upon our review of Smith Projects, Inc. quote package, that was complete. And reading from the evaluation of quote letter, okay. Westler Engineering has worked with Smith Projects Incorporated in the past on various drainage improvement projects for the City of Indianapolis Department of Public Works, and they have performed satisfactorily. Smith Projects, Inc. has also worked successfully with Westler Engineering in the City of Beech Grove on the Hartman Park parking lot project. So we reviewed both quotes. There was one quote package that was complete. And based upon our experience with Smith Projects, we believe they can complete the 2017 Drainage Improvements project. So if the Board so chooses, they could move forward with the notice of award to Smith Projects, Inc.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I don't have any.
Based on the recommendation from our sanitary engineer, I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation for Smith Projects.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Also, Board, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to proceed with the notice of award to Smith Projects for stormwater improvements.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye as well, and the motion carries. That's for us, yeah. Was there anything else this evening, Brent?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide an update on the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. I wanted to let the Board know that the project has been completed successfully, with the exception of some site restoration issues. So we're very pleased with the outcome of that project and Miller Pipeline's performance. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Board members?
I don't have any.
You said the site restoration was delayed?
Just, there's just some grass that needs to be dealt with, yeah, where they've killed a little bit of the grass, so they need to do some seeding and straw, but that's it.
All right. Brent, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have nothing.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:14 PM. We will convene our Common Council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, May the 1st, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to begin, or to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District 5.
Debbie Springer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Eda Mascari, Council, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Thank you, Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, under special presentations, we have three or four items. The first is a proclamation proclaiming May the 6th through the 13th as Osteogenesis Imperfecta Awareness Week in the City of Beech Grove. Whereas osteogenesis imperfecta is a condition commonly referred to as brittle bone disease, and whereas more than 20,000 people are diagnosed with this condition each year in the United States, and whereas there is no cure for this condition, and treatment includes, but is not limited to, a diagnosis, lab testing, and imaging techniques, medications, physical therapy, and orthopedic surgery. And whereas osteogenesis imperfecta is caused by a defective gene that disallows a protein called calagen to generate and strengthen bones. And whereas more information about osteogenesis imperfecta, and the foundation that supports this condition, can be found at www.oif.org. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, do hereby proclaim May 6th through May 13th, 2017, to be Osteogenesis Imperfecta Awareness Week in the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand, and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, on this first day of May, in the year of our Lord, 2017. And I'll distribute this to the group that wanted me to present this tonight. We have one more proclamation this evening, Council. And it's a proclamation proclaiming May the 14th through the 20th as National Prevention Week in the City of Beech Grove. This is a proclamation proclaiming May the 14th, 2017, to May the 20th, 2017, as National Prevention Awareness Week in the City of Beech Grove. Whereas heroin and opiate use is at a record level, and whereas substance abuse takes its toll on families and loved ones who are addicted, and whereas addiction to opiates and other drugs is not a crime, but an illness, and whereas our public safety departments and Department of Public Works respond to incidents of abuse in our city every day, and whereas cities and health departments in both Marion County and across the state of Indiana must come up with programs to offer assistance to families and all of those affected by addiction. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, do hereby proclaim May the 14th, 2017, to May the 20th, 2017, as National Prevention Week in the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand, and cause the great seal of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, to be affixed this first day of May, 2017. I wanted to present this to you. You're welcome to say a few words, if you'd like. If not, that's fine.
Well, I definitely want to thank our first responders, and also the Police Department, for all the lives that they have saved, which numerous lives have been saved by both. And I appreciate all the work that you have done on that. And I don't know if the city also realizes the numerous overdoses that occur here daily in Beech Grove. There are a lot. I don't think you really realize that. And I, but I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. This evening, Council, we, in your packet is a Redevelopment Commission Annual Report for 2016. That report was put together by our financial consultant, Jeff Peters. It is up for your review, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it this evening, or since you've gotten your packets or not, but it's there for your review. I don't think Don Webb's here. But it is required to be submitted to you annually.
I see Kathy Chappell.
You have any comment on it, Kathy? If you have any questions concerning the report, you may want to contact the Clerk's office or the Redevelopment Commission. But this is a requirement to be submitted to you. Any questions or comments? We'll move on to the next item. At the last meeting, the Council approved a resolution, and the Mayor and the Clerk signed it, but you folks did not sign it. So the Deputy Clerk this evening has the sign, the signature sheet, and she'll distribute it for your signature. I believe it was Resolution 4, if I'm not mistaken. 5? And one other special presentation that's not on your agenda. In your packet was a memo from myself, and I'll just read it to you. Council, you have one appointment to the Fire Department Merit Commission. Your current appointment is Don Smith. Don's four-year term concludes in May of this year. I have spoken with Don, and he passed on that he would like to continue on the Merit Commission. I advised him that I would pass that on to the Council. So you have a, an appointment to the Merit Commission.
Is there anybody else still in interest there?
I haven't asked, I haven't talked with anyone. We'll move on to the reading of the minutes. The Council, the minutes of the previous meeting have been printed, dated April the 3rd, 2017. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Public comments, Councilor?
Yes, two people signed up. The first one is Dan Pavy. Yeah, step up, sir. No, you don't want, okay, all right. Next one's Joe Griffin.
Okay, if I pass these down to the Council, will they follow along with me?
Can we pass them down?
Did you all want one? Okay, if I have a couple extra minutes, otherwise I'll either talk real fast or real brief.
You stay on topic, how about that?
All right, here we go. My name's Joe Griffin, and I think most of you know me. I have a couple of concerns about Resolution Number 4 and 5. Resolution Number 4 was done so we could get a federal grant that was stated as slum slash blight. And the feds realize that that's a bad term to be putting down, and will allow the states to go ahead and amend that out if they so choose. And the State of Indiana chose to go ahead and do that. And in doing so, they had a guide set out so you could go ahead and follow. And once you did that, it comes in as redevelopment, because that doesn't have the same terms as slum and blight. So if you look on page 2, that should look somewhat familiar. If you look at the top, that is the example of which they want this done. That was done out of their book. It's right there in red. You got two of them, one's for spot, and the other one's for the area. Beech Grove went for the area. So if you go to the next page, you'll see that the Council passed this under 35-7-14, to which is a criminal law procedure, and has been repealed. And now I'll bring up Resolution Number 5 real quick, because even though it was amended out, there's always been questions about what's in a TIF and what's not in a TIF. And in your, RDC is supposed to list, which I'm pretty sure they should have it in there already, if you look in your report, yearly, all parcels that are included in your TIF area. So we should have no problems of understanding what's in there. I included that little, little law down there. If you go to the next page, if you look in your narrative, it's kind of questionable, because it says general area, an area generally defined by, then it goes on, and then down there at the bottom, it says specifically set forth in Attachment A. So I'm going to take it. If you can't understand the narrative, then the Attachment A will clear all that up. I've been a part of this on the RDC, I understand how some of this stuff can just get real wordy, and you don't understand, you need a diagram. So if you go to Exhibit A, you'll sit there and see there's a real thin line on Main Street, and then you have like a big block down there between Emerson, and I'm going to say 2nd, I guess that's what that is, if you sit there and look at it. Shouldn't that be more of a block T, if you want to include buildings on Main Street? Then if you go to the next page, Indiana Law, specifically comes up here and says a couple different things. If you sit there and look at that, impaired structural condition that makes them unsafe to a person or property, a fire hazard, or a public health hazard. That's just a couple of them. Then if you go down there and you start reading the national, national, pardon me, national or the feds' objectives to a slum or blighted area, they claim that they're even tougher than what the states are to meet up to it. You know, to which kind of brings up a couple of questions. Should this have been just a copy and paste blank resolution? Because you went 35 dash, what was that, 35, 14, 7? It should have been 36, 7, 14, I believe. This should have been just a copy and paste and fill blanks resolution from the state for, from their example. As stakeholders, will Beech Grove citizens find all information posted on the Beech Grove website as we go through this? Can buildings on Main Street be included, since they're not in the narrative or diagram? What buildings are included? And what happens if a building is included, and the owner does not want to follow through with the grant procedure or whatever else? Because terms of grants aren't right straight, aren't straightforward on every grant. It doesn't mean, hey, here's money, there you go, it's free. When I was on the RDC, they had specific guidelines. You could get this grant money if you follow lines, and then certain things go on. I had a student grant that wasn't free money either. You had to do certain things also to follow that. So not all grants are free, so what are the terms of those? I'm not for or against this, I'm just bringing up some points about what I seen in Resolution 4 and 5, and I was just, you know, it could help, but let's just make sure we do it properly and stuff, so I'm just kind of, kind of wondering on those. Questions?
So what are, what are you saying, Joe? Are you saying that the line down Main Street isn't going to include the buildings, and that, that that should be modified?
Correct. You did two things here. You brought it in on a, according to your sample right there, it should be 36, 7, 14. You brought it in under 35, 7, 14, to which is a criminal law code, and it's been repealed. If you go there and look at the example, it sits there, and it shows specifically what you should do in order to bring it in. It's basically a fill in the blanks and, and that stuff there. You know, as being the old clerk treasurer, if it's not clearly defined, then it really can't be included in there. And if you sit there and look at the federal guidelines and the state guidelines, they are specific in your narrative and stuff, and they want you to be very specific on what's included and what's not included, down to the street guidelines and that stuff. Right now, like I said the last time, it just looks like we have a line and we blighted Main Street. Blighted, slummed, redeveloped, however you want to call it, Main Street. No buildings are included down there. If all you had to do was run a little line down there, why do we have the big T at the top? It should be a block T in there, really, if you're asking me, that's what I would think. But you go to the top, down there Emerson and 2nd, that is including all buildings. Down Main Street, we just got to run a little thin line. And when we were talking, from what I understood, we're going to be doing buildings on Main Street, too, to be included on this, from, from what I heard the last time. That's why I'm kind of wondering. Just points, points right there. So right now, we don't even have it under a redevelopment, still considered a slum or a blight, blighted area, since it came in, didn't come in under 36.
Craig, what's your assessment?
It sounds like you may have the scribners there. I didn't prepare the resolution, but I, I don't have any reason to dispute what you're saying. I don't know.
That's why I passed out this stuff, so you guys could sit there and look at it. I mean, there is a lot of stuff. I just took out some highlights. It's pretty easy to find if you go there and do a little research. I did pull it all out, because you people know I can get a little bit much on the information and that. So I just pulled out highlights and put stuff down there, just so you could, could know and understand a couple of quick things. You can do further research, but that's pretty much in line with what they're generally saying as an overall thing, because, you know, if the federal government, as it said in one thing, if federal government said this is just for general resurfacing and everything else, we'd be broke. Everybody'd be doing this. You know, another reason is why are you hiring an architect to come through here? Because you got to have an architect say, hey, why is it broke? And if you sit there and look at Indiana State law, you know, they, they are specific on what they're saying, and the federal government wants even going deeper into what they're saying. So I just named off a couple, but personal health, you know, public health hazards to the public, you know, it, it the public, you know, it gets very specific on how you include it. It's a bit more than just general. That's why I was all worried about calling it a blighted area. And even if you did rename it into redevelopment area, which would be nice if you're going to do it, redevelopment sounds much better than a blighted slum area. So those were kind of my concerns.
Any other questions for Joe? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Anybody else sign up for?
Nope, that's it.
We'll move to committee reports. Mayor's Youth Council.
Liz.
Good evening. Bishop sends his regards. He actually went home ill today, that's going around a little bit. We also, I know with the busy agenda for you last month, skipped last month, so I feel like I have quite a bit of fun news to share. We completed our community service for the spring, and the weather did cooperate, which was awesome for us. We got so many complimentary note cards back from people, and the kids love to hear that, the teachers love to hear that, so it's just all in all a fantastic day, I think, for the community and the high school. Two grants that I wanted to update you on, I mentioned one of these, I think, earlier in the fall when we were going for it, but we're really excited about the movement on these. We have the Lilly Grant Advisory Committee that's meeting this last week and the next week. What this grant will do is it will increase our ability to provide counseling and restorative services for our students, and we're targeting the after-hours time for the kids. And that's a district-wide grant, so we're very excited about that. We received the planning grant, and we are now going for the implementation grant, which would be additional funds. The work ethic certificate grant is what I mentioned earlier, we're also excited about that coming together. We will implement next year for students, and based on criteria for graduating seniors of GPA, attendance, community service, things, volunteer, things that they would do outside of school time, they could receive a work ethic certificate as part of their graduation exercises, and we're hoping as part of the advisory partnership that businesses will then guarantee interviews for students that graduate with this work ethic certificate. So we're also excited about that. We celebrated our administrative assistants last week, and we are celebrating our teachers this week, so if anyone knows of a teacher or administrative assistant, feel free to send them some regards for their hard work. Our spring sports, I always feel like they get the short end of the stick with weather, but they are plugging through. We've had a few cancellations. Softball and baseball are doing pretty well. We had a few wins in ICC for girls tennis, and then our track and field is doing pretty well as well. Our academic Super Bowl was held at the high school in late April. We placed in Class Two, second in science, fine arts in third, third for social studies, third for math, and third for interdisciplinary, so the kids did really well with that. The ICC art competition was spectacular for the high school, we took first place, and one of our students, J.C., was also awarded Best in Show. So really excited about that. Hannah Blalock, one of our students, was on the All-State Jazz Choir, and a number of our Spanish four students placed gold, bronze, and honorable mention in the Spanish tests. We have two small things that we're planning for in three weeks. One is baccalaureate, and the other is graduation. We're doing a pretty interesting thing this year with baccalaureate I wanted to share. We've not separated out our top ten in the past, and baccalaureate has been sort of a dwindling program in terms of attendance, so we'd like to recognize our top ten in addition to perhaps increasing the attendance at that event for students. So we have a pay it forward theme with the partnerships with pastors in the community, so we will still continue that, hopefully bringing more of them together on the baccalaureate event, and we will honor our top ten that evening. And the top ten will identify an honored educator, and they will each read a hundred words about each other. So it's a tearful evening I'm planning for, but we're excited about it. And then our graduation this year, as you guys may remember, it's our centennial, it's our hundredth graduating class this year, so I thought it appropriate to present City Hall and Mayor Buckley with the hundredth edition of Beach Grove High School's yearbook. So we have our actual digitized yearbooks, I know the library has those digital, and so obviously this one will join that, but hopefully in another hundred years, it'll be kind of cool for people to look back on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
I'll certainly take any questions, if anyone has any. All right, good evening, happy May.
Thank you.
Thank you.
RDC report? ABC report. Ashley.
Good evening, council members. So today we had our ABC meeting, we had two renewals. One was the El Matrillo, not match, just butchered that one, sorry. El Malchio, I cannot talk tonight, I'm really sorry. Malchio, the Mexican restaurant. They were approved for renewal, and then Night Owls was approved as well. We had a new application for Lucky's Pub under Steven Taylor LLC, so they were approved for a new application for Lucky's Pub. Any questions?
Where is Lucky's Pub?
Lucky's Pub, it's at Second and Alton.
Or Albany.
Albany.
What was the name of that Mexican restaurant?
Is it El Mariachi?
El, yes, thank you. I can't talk tonight, apparently, so.
Ask the mayor where he falls in on that hundred years. That's what you need, come back in.
Try three tough years. Eleven career.
Well, he took four years of German, so there you have it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
The Greenscape Commission report is on file, plus attached to that is a proclamation for Arbor Day. It was a very good ceremony on the twenty-third, and I want to thank the folks out at Hornet Park for helping the Greenscape Commission put that on, so. Debbie, was there a financial report?
No.
Okay. No report from compliance, and you have, you should have public safety report in front of you. That concludes committee reports. Under unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting, we have EDC nominations. I'll defer to the council president, Pro Tem. Buddy?
To my knowledge, we have two names, and I see both of them here, Dan Pavy and Susie McMillan, and to my knowledge, those are the two names that were mentioned at our last meeting. And I think if I'm correct, I believe Counselor Day brought up Susie McMillan's name, and Counselor Harrison brought up Mr. Pavy's name. So, Mayor, unless there's something else to be added by any counselor, those would be the two names that we will vote on, and unfortunately, and I say that because we have two good citizens out here trying for this position, that only one gets to move on. Kind of like a game show, but. And at that point, Mayor, I'm not sure how you want to address the vote. Do we want to just go individuals and?
Are we going to afford the?
We can, yes. As far as?
I know Mr. Pavy had signed up to speak, but I'm thinking maybe it was for this, is that correct?
Was that? I'm sure you do want to speak, though, correct? There you go. All right, you want to be the first then? You have to be able to pronounce the name of the Mexican restaurant to move on, though.
El Mariachi.
Oh, no.
Only because I heard it. Honorable council members, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like the opportunity to give back to Beach Grove. My wife and I have raised our children, and, you know, here for forty-three years. We lived at, on Thirteenth, great place to watch the fireworks from our house. And I've known Susie and Dan for many, many years, from Holy Name, and Susie would be a great candidate, it's a shame we both can't serve, because I think we both have distinct, you know, things to offer. I offer, my last ten years at the city-county for Marion County, Indianapolis, I was a project manager, and so I offer my leadership and planning and communication skills, and I believe I sent everyone a, just a brief resume. I apologize for having led the Marion County property tax system, putting that into place. No, I don't, that was quite a project, I enjoyed it. But anyway, you know, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I would certainly, I'd love to serve on this committee to help promote economic growth and job opportunities, increase the tax base, as it says, and really make this place, this great city, even a better place for, to raise our kids and grandkids. I believe that was all I had to offer, so may I answer any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Susie McMillan?
First, I just want to say thank you to Kevin Day, Counselor Day, for nominating me, I appreciate that. And I really don't have anything to add. Dan Pavy would be a wonderful appointment as well. I've known Dan for years, and he has quite a bit of experience and quite, he has the education, so I think he'd be wonderful as well. The reason I would mainly be interested in it is as a Main Street business owner, because I would like for us to have a voice in what goes on in this city, and I don't feel like we always do, so that's one reason why I would like to serve. I'm not, I don't clear, have a clear understanding, I don't think exactly of what an EDC is supposed to do, but I'm sure I could pick up and learn, and I'm sure I would take the time to learn if I were put on the committee, so that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Susie. I can say that the conversations I've had even today and yesterday, that both Dan and Susie complimented each other, and that's worth everything, so appreciate that. And that leaves us to making a selection. So unless the mayor has any guidance, I just say that each member just?
They would poll the council individually, beginning on your right.
Okay. Okay.
Susie McMillan?
Susie.
McMillan.
Dan Pavy.
Susie McMillan.
Dan Pavy.
Susie McMillan. And I believe?
What's the tally?
I believe it would be four, or excuse me, five to two.
Five to two.
Yes.
Any other comment on the EDC nomination?
I have a comment, Mayor, that has, I want to say, first of all, I'm glad that the EDC was brought up. I know in the past it was the only thing the city guided themselves on because of metropolitan development, and we didn't have an RDC. But I thought it was funny that, I just wanted to share this, because I think it's fair to the council members, of really that, how difficult it is when they know two individuals in a small town. And to both of you, I just want to compliment that that's what come from out of the council, so it makes it hard sometimes to make a decision. So I just wanted to pass that along, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to. General Ordinance Number One, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This is an ordinance that increases the ambulance rates for out-of-city responses. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
We'll vote individually, on my left.
Title only.
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 Thank you. At this time, I'll ask the deputy clerk to read the General Ordinance Number One, 2017, into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number One, 2017, is an ordinance that amends Chapter Thirty-four, Section Thirty-four point one-five B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana pursuant to ambulance responses outside the corporate city limits of the City of Beach Grove.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number One, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please record your vote. this evening. General Ordinance Two is an ordinance that deletes four chapters of the current Code of Ordinances concerning employee policies, fishing at Lake Creek, libraries, and taxi cabs. This time, I'll ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I will make said motion.
I'll second.
And we'll vote individually, beginning on my left.
Title only.
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 Thank you. General Ordinance Number Two, 2017, is up for approval on third, excuse me. At this time, I'll ask the clerk, deputy clerk, to read the ordinance into the record by title only, I'm sorry.
General Ordinance Number Two, 2017, is an ordinance that starts the process of updating the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning codes that are outdated or no longer apply.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Two, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. That has been tabled until further notice, but I do want to update the council on some proceedings that have taken place since we've last met. We have conferred with both Citizens Energy and our attorney, and we have, the three objectives that we're trying to meet are, the first one is to get objectives that we're trying to meet are, the first one is to get the rate increase reduced for our ratepayers. Number two is to extend the time when the rate increase has to be enforced. We would like to push it back at least a year. And the third and final thing is to eliminate the capital improvements pavement, or payment that we do each year to citizens. So we are working through that. Other than that, there is nothing to report this evening, and I'll advise you when, and Craig will advise you when we move forward. I don't anticipate anything, at least through June, maybe even July. So we'll just table it until then. Any questions or comments?
Thanks for the information, Mayor.
Yeah. Okay. We'll move on to General Ordinance Number Four, 2017. In your packet was a clean, we had made some changes, and you should have received the clean changed ordinance. If you have not, please let me know. But anyway, General Ordinance Number Four, 2017, is up for approval on second reading this evening, and I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules and read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
And we'll vote individually, beginning on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. General Ordinance, or, at this time, I'll ask the deputy clerk to read the ordinance into the record for second reading on title only.
General Ordinance Number Four, 2017, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 99 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to parks and recre- recreation.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Four, 2017, is up for approval this evening on second reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second a motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you very much. We will hear this on third reading at the June 5th City Council Meeting. That concludes unfinished business from the previous meetings. Under new business this evening, we have two items. First is a public hearing pursuant to the Main Street Revitalization Planning Grant. At this time, I would like to introduce Mike Klein Peter, who is the grant writer, who is assisting us in this endeavor. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you. This will begin our public hearing.
Mike?
Good evening. My name's Mike Klein Peter with Klein Peter Consulting, and I'm a certified grant administrator. We are applying specifically for a downtown revitalization planning grant through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We are requesting $40,000. We will be contributing a local match of $4,450, of which 2,225 of that will come from the Redevelopment Commission, 2,225 will come out of the city's general fund. The purpose of this downtown revitalization plan is to look at current market conditions downtown, the physical characteristics of the downtown, and then identify potential business owners that would be interested in getting architectural renderings of their current buildings, and architectural renderings of how buildings could look after the improvements are made. OCRE does have minimum technical requirements for these plans, so there is about a three-page document that whatever engineer or architect that's selected will have to follow. The request for qualifications has been sent out to architectures, architecture and engineering firms, and anybody that is interested in potentially doing the plan will need to respond by noon on May 15th. We intend to submit our application for the $40,000 on June 30th, 2017. We want to make sure that all citizens are informed of the project and able to voice concerns if they may have so. Just a little bit of background on the process and where we've been and where we're going. We submitted our letter of intent to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Susie Ripley is our liaison. We had a site visit with her on April 5th. The funds for these programs are non-competitive, so we will, we will be able to get these as long as we have the slumlight resolution, which Mr. Griffin talked about just a little bit ago. As far as, I wanted to address some of his concerns, if I, if I may. The res, the code 35714, he said it said it should be 36714. He may be correct on that. I don't know, honestly, that's a, one of OCRE's forms they give us for the resolution and just tell us to put the amounts and where they come from, so I'll reach out to them and ask them. In regards to the Main Street and whether those buildings are eligible, those buildings are eligible. Susie Ripley provided guidance to us in Next Stop Beach Grove when we were developing this, and any building that is touching any part of that T is eligible for this planning grant. An architect or engineer is needed for this project because this is phase one. Phase two is after we do this planning grant, we're able to apply for up to a $500,000 grant. It will require a 20% match, but in order to qualify for that, you have to have cost estimates and architectural renderings of current buildings and what the proposed building would look like. So those steps are what this planning grant does upfront. Building owners, if they do participate in the first phase, they are not locked into the second phase. They can, things happen, they may not be able to participate in the next phase, that's okay. I currently am working on the City of Greenfield with their big downtown revitalization plan. They just had a $500,000 grant funded, so I'm very familiar with how this works. So with that, I think there is a sign-in sheet for the, for the meeting tonight. I do need everybody to please sign on your way out. And with that, I think we'll turn it open for public comment, concerns, or questions.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If, if the $500,000 grant were awarded, and you said we had a $20,000 copay, did that mean there would be $600,000 then?
So it's a $500,000 grant with a 20% total project cost match, so it actually ends up being a $500,000 grant, $125,000 match. Most communities that apply, the, they work on a partnership between business owners and city to come up with that $125. Sometimes we get some philanthropic match, stuff like that.
Okay. And how does that money, how was that money spent if we did get it?
So what would happen is on this first stage, we're going to identify seven to nine buildings. When we interview architects, that'll be one of the questions asked us, how many buildings will we get for this plan? The more, the better, but they're going to put together what the current building looks like and the future building would look like, signage, facades, doors, windows, storefronts, all that stuff is eligible, and they're going to give us a project cost. So, once they do that, then we're going to take those numbers and apply for the big grant. So, the big grant's going to be for $625,000. You usually have about $48,000 in grant admin, usually $75,000 in engineering, so then you get $500,000 worth of those improvements in those buildings. It always comes back, though, that the, some of the people you work with upfront in phase one, they may not have the financial means to help in phase two. So it's, it's really important, is when we're looking upfront on which buildings we're going to improve, and that's just going to depend on interest. If we have a lot of interest, then sometimes we have to score these buildings based on certain parameters, so everybody's got a fair shot. Sometimes there's not, there's only seven or nine businesses were interested, and everybody gets a shot to come in, and it works great, so that's kind of how the process worked before.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Do you understand how the grants are given? Okay, I, I had a couple of questions. One, is it true, when they read the ordinance last week, I had a concern about if, if it deemed that that business was not worth facing or whatever, even though it's not owned by the city, it could be torn down. Is that correct?
That is not correct. There, this, so in order to qualify for this federal money, you've got to either qualify under, this money comes from HUD. It's called the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. There's two ways to qualify for this money. You've got to either be 51%, of your community has to be low to moderate income, or you have to pass a resolution declaring it an area-wide basis slumlight.
So an whole area, yeah.
Right. And so, it's, and, and giving it that, that, that slumlight designation doesn't mean anything's getting destroyed. It just means it's eligible for these funds to make improvements. So, that's...
Thank you. Thank you for the redevelopment. It sounds better. Like you said right there, isn't a bad place.
Right, and that's just, that's the federal language that's required for these funds. And I'm writing up here just because I got to keep track of all the questions. Go ahead.
My question is, on these grants, I heard you mention if the business wants to participate. Okay, so who actually gets the grant? Does the business get the grant, or is the city getting the grant?
So these funds will only go to the city. The city is the legal applicant for these funds. The city will manage all these funds. What will happen is if, if the city and business owners come in with some kind of relationship to where they're going to put up so much money, and you guys are going to put up so much money, you would deposit that into the city's account. The city would then apply for the grant, and the clerk treasurer would sign off saying we have enough funds to cover the project. So it would, it's not you directly, but when you're wrote into the grant, you're going to be, if we go for the $500,000 grant and we write in that we're, you're interested, you say you have your local match, we did the architectural renderings, we got the cost estimate, then there'll be some paperwork like, there'll be some paperwork that's signed by the business owners saying they're, they are planning on going forward with this project. But that's for the second phase, the big construction phase, we're not there yet.
What, what is the match for the business?
That's, for phase one, there is no match. The city's paying, the city and the Redevelopment Commission are paying for that. For phase two, that's totally up to whatever the council, the Redevelopment Commission, philanthropic match, business owners kind of come in. There's, it's, it's, it's a wide range, honestly.
And who decides which businesses are eligible?
Right, so right now, we're working with Next Stop Beach Grove, but if any business owner's interested, they're, they're more than welcome to participate.
But what, what doesn't, how, when you say you're working with Next Stop Beach Grove, they're not a business entity, so...
Right.
I'm trying to understand how you said which business.
Right, so they're the Main Street group that's working here in town. But if any business owner's interested, you can reach out to me, or reach out to Mr. Kaufman or the mayor, and let us know you're interested. What'll happen is we'll end up seeing how many businesses are interested. If more than seven or nine or whatever architect says we can do with our money are interested, then there'll be probably a scoring rubric that's put together like, and I don't know exactly what questions, we could probably pull some from some other communities that have had this similar problem where they've narrowed it down, but I don't know, we're, we're not sure we're going to be there, well, we've got to narrow down yet, so I don't want to...
My last question is, have you met with any of the property owners on Main Street, the properties for businesses?
I have not.
Okay, does anyone, do you know?
Mr. Kaufman, I do believe.
Have you met with the businesses on Main, the property owners on Main Street?
So, well, the Next Stop Beach Grove is a group that we talked to council about. That we formed last year, kind of to be kind of the voice for us business owners, and we had a meeting, was that last July, we had our first official meeting? Our first public meeting was last July, and we sent out to all the business owners that we got...
The business owners, the property owners? Are aware of this grant and what's going on with it, I mean, you have...
I hope so. We tried, a lot of people aren't responding to emails or post office mail, so we're having our time getting in contact with every single business or property owner.
How many property owners have been involved, do you know?
I don't know, I couldn't give you a handoff. That first meeting, there were 60 people there probably, in July, business owners.
How many property owners?
I'm not sure how many were there.
That would be a, a big question that I would...
I'm trying to understand what it is.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to get contact, but it's just hard to get contact.
I look at Franklin, for example, I know there's a lot of cities that are participating in it. According to their website, that's correct, I don't have this.
I'm not sure. I know, I know it had like 22.
Yeah, I...
Their ma, their major area is not, though. What I'm talking about, their, their major area, those specific, what we're concerned about, the businesses.
So to answer the gentleman in red's question, I kind of skipped over, and I apologize. I did work for OCRE for 10 months, so I'm very familiar with what goes into these grants, what happens, how they're scored. You mentioned that Franklin, where I actually monitored that project, so I came in at the end to make sure everything was done correctly, so I'm very familiar with that one. Greenfield brought in 10 or 11 businesses in their big $500,000 grant, so, just to, to fill in. Yes, sir. No, so what, 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 I'm just using Greenfield as an example, because we just recently did that one. Every business owner put up a certain percentage of their building, so if the cost estimates said your building was $100,000, and you put up 20%, then you put up $20,000. We are going to have to have property owners involved in this, because we can't make any changes to their building without a title with their name on it, so...
I'm not a property owner.
Sure.
I'm just a business owner.
Sure.
And I'm curious, because I've had a lot of people ask me questions about that, including my landlord, and I'm like, I don't know, I don't understand that my...
Sure, and if there's any landlords out there that want to learn more, I've got cards, see me afterwards, and I'll give you a card and have them reach out to me. I just live 15 minutes away, so I'd love to meet with any of them that are interested. Yes, sir.
And, and the same with Next Stop Beach Grove, I know you get the emails, you're on the email list, Susie, so if you can forward that to the property owner, I don't know if yours is on there?
I don't know if Brown has the email, or if the owners generally...
I was going to ask that about the money distributed equally. What if that owner doesn't feel that the process was, is there an appeals process? Because you said the city has total control of the, the distribution.
Right. Sure, so in phase one, we're, we're kind of skipping to phase two, but in phase two, if you're doing some construction, and you do not feel that the architectural renderings, because the architect's going to be meeting with the property owner, making sure they agree to the changes that are on their building. If you do not feel that the work was done satisfactory or to your liking, the, the grant is not closed until the Office of Community and Rural Affairs comes out and monitors the project. And at that time, if there's any concern, you're happy to reach out to them or me, the grant administrator. We have performance and payment bonds on all the contractors. There'll be one prime contractor over the whole project, so, and that retain, and we hold retainage back through the project, and that will not be released until the end when everybody's fully satisfied.
Thank you.
Have you had many, in other projects, have you had many complaints about communications or felt that maybe one business got treated differently than another? Have you had much of that?
I haven't had much issue over in Greenfield with that. We're just getting ready to bid the project out, though. You know, it's, it comes down to communication, and everybody, the architect really needs to be involved a lot with everything. The, the biggest issue I've seen since I've monitored these projects and worked at OCRE is usually it comes down to funding. People back out at the last minute, and then there's nine business owners that we're expecting them to come through, and then what's going to happen now? So the sooner you start in the process, the, the better off you are, you know?
And I, I just think that, you know, you always want to throw out that you don't want to be discriminated on, or you don't want, certain people don't communicate like the rest of the world, especially business owners that might not live, not owners, the property owners who might not live here, so...
Sure.
I know those are things that you've dealt with, but it's something, that's one thing that sticks in my mind, so...
Sure. Any other comments or questions for me? Thank you for your time.
Mike, if you could get that, order for that sign-up key in for the council, if you can go ahead and give it to them now, they'll sign it.
Great. I think I've got an extra one.
And is there any business owners that want to...
You want my real name on here, or?
Chris, Jim? Come on up.
This process usually is pretty exciting, though, because it gives people an opportunity to maybe take their building back to more historic facades and stuff like that, so usually there's a lot of interest once you start going.
I'm Chris Henthorn, own Henthorn Agency at 411 Main Street. We've been there for, since 1956. As a business owner, longtime business owner on Beach Grove, we're really excited, really, for the possibility to bring more businesses into Main Street, make it more vibrant, give it a facelift on some of the faces, some of the buildings really need some work. My building particularly, not so much, but there's a lot that do, and I think if the Main Street looks great, and it's vibrant, and it brings in new businesses, then it's good for everybody in Beach Grove.
Hi, Jim Kaufman. My family owns X sign two store at 620 Main Street. I think this is a great opportunity for the business owners and the property owners to kind of continue the work that has been done in the city of Beach Grove with the infrastructure and the new Main Street, and getting all that taken care of in the past and now. A lot of the buildings on Main Street are old. I mean, they're all, my store is built in 1923. All these buildings, some people have the money to maintain them and to fix them up. If we're able to have properties who are to be fixed up, and then a new business opens up in that property, then you know that's great for the city of Beach Grove and our Main Street, but I think this will give an opportunity to those individuals or businesses who needed extra help to kind of fix up... extra help, um, to kind of fix up their property, and to continue, um, providing the services or the, uh, the product that they do there on our Main Street. So, um, if you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any of them. And again, uh, Next Stop Beach Grove is an organization who, we started last year on, on, in offset of the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce, 'cause we wanted to be that voice of the business and the property owners there in Beach Grove. Um, so if you have anybody who hasn't been contacted in the past, um, we're trying to get that information, we're trying to come up with a database of names, addresses, phone numbers, email addresses, um, anything that we need to, to contact those people, to let them know, uh, the things that are going on, um, specifically in this area, in the grant process. We'd love to, um, get that information, so we can make sure they're aware of it, so, um, again, I appreciate you guys' support.
Jimmy, have you found a few businesses that have been difficult, as, as far as the ownership of the property to communicate with?
Yeah, there's a few, um, I know Dawn Whalen and Tammy Hannah, that they sent out a, a lot of letters to a lot of addresses, people who we haven't been able to get contact with. Um, a lot of them, I think, are landlords who live elsewhere. Um, we've gotten some of those back. Um, I think Dawn has gotten maybe a handful or two of those back. Um, we, we have a, a growing list of email addresses, um, and I know not everybody uses emails, but if there's a phone number, we don't mind calling if we have to. Uh, we're all volunteers here, but if we need to call a handful of people, we can, uh, to remind them of a meeting, or a deadline, or any type of issue that's coming up, we'd be happy to call them if, if that's their, uh, main, uh, method of contact, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you, any question, you can email nextstopbeachgrove@gmail.com is our email address, um, and then we forward them to, you know, to Dennis, or the clerk, or somebody. I'm sure they can find, filter its way down to our group to make sure they're notified of anything that's happening.
Do, do you find that businesses are receptive to this, or you find...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so you're finding a good, a good, I mean, a good response?
Yes.
People are, businesses are liking this idea?
After our, uh, initial public meeting that we invited all the, uh, business and property owners to last year, um, we probably had, I'd say, at least twenty or so, twenty to twenty-five, uh, active business owners and property owners who are coming to meetings, and are serving on the committees, and are volunteering their time to help promote Next Stop Beach Grove, um, specifically on the website, uh, through emails. Um, the Southside Times did a, uh, article on it, uh, last week as well, so we appreciate that, so, um, yeah, there, there's a large group of people who are excited about it, who are willing to, uh, provide the time, 'cause it, it does take a lot of time to promote, um, a whole area, um, and that's kind of where Next Stop Beach Grove came in, 'cause we wanted to be that next stop. Um, there's all these other small areas around central Indiana where people go to eat and dine, and to provide services, and, and, you know, take care of those needs that they have in their life, and we want Beach Grove to be that next one, so we, we, we wanna do that as a group of individuals and business owners, um, and property owners there.
And I understand that your businesses promote each other.
Correct, absolutely, yeah.
You step, yeah.
Correct.
You promote each other, and that improves the business and overall the well-being of the whole...
Somebody's coming here for one, for one service, and they don't realize there's another business there, it, it, it only stands to benefit that other person or that other business, 'cause if they're coming here for a reason, we need to give them a reason to stop and to stay, and not just do that one thing there, so, um, I, I think most people realize that, um, if they're successful, everyone else will be successful, too.
And I know your information is out there, you've been coming to the RDC meetings, you had, I was at, I was, I was, went to the meeting that you had last year, it was a large event, a lot of participation, a lot of enthusiasm, so...
Correct.
Uh, you know, applaud you for really wanting to do that for us.
It's fine, like I said, I, that, this is, I think, it can be the heart of Beach Grove, and I think, um, it can be a very big area for where activities and events, and people can come on a regular basis, um, and just walk the streets and see what they can find, 'cause you'd be surprised what's out there, 'cause we, we calculated about eighty-eight current operating businesses, um, in that T area, so, um, with the opportunity of having about a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fourteen, um, if we were at full capacity, so, um, we'll get there eventually, but there, out of those eighty-eight, I think you'd be surprised what is out there, if, um, if, if you realize what you needed in your life on a regular basis, uh, service or good, uh, I think it's, most of it's out there, if you just wanna go down there and see for yourself, 'cause I always very surprised myself when...
Well, thank you for that community effort, that's what we need.
Yeah, it's, it's fun, so...
Appreciate you guys' effort, a lot of energy there. I, I, this might be a hard question, but is...
Yes, sir.
Is, uh, Chris over here hard to work with, I mean...
Oh, no, he's great.
All right.
He's keeping us all together.
I got the week, I'll talk to you later.
He keeps us all together.
Thank you, guys.
I have a friend of mine that I was with a week ago Sunday, and it, it came down and went to the tea room.
Mm-hmm.
And I was, we was at dinner, a bunch of us, and she was talking about the tea room, and about the great flor, florists in Beach Grove, and about the shoe store, and she said they're really starting to build the, the place up, and that, that, she didn't know some empty buildings, and I think with revitalization and building the facades and everything, could bring in more business, and I'm a hundred percent...
I agree, thank you. And, and I think people are seeing that benefit, and seeing the investment, and realizing that it is, it is well worth it in the long run. Um, you know, with Tammy Hannah and the rest of the group in the tea room, it's a, a great example there, that she's there for the long run, and she sees the potential that our Main Street has, um, also with the guys that bought the old meat market at Fifth and May. I know that's gonna be a great thing when that comes to fruition, it's gonna be a lot of work on their end, but they, they see that, that benefit as well, so, um, this planning grant here just kinda helped, hopefully, push that along a little bit, to where we can get to that end goal faster than, um, we are currently, so...
Well, I encourage the council to become part of the chamber. When you go to the chamber, what, limited times I've been able to go, the business owners are young, they're enthusiastic, they're welcoming, um, they've got a real vision for our city, and, uh, it's, it just makes us proud to, to be part of you.
Any other questions? Thanks, guys, we appreciate your help. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
I wanna recap what, uh, Mike said in his presentation. The Indiana Code, uh, the statute number, was supplied to us by OKRA. It's not something we made up out of our hat. It was supplied to us by the state agency. And all of those buildings on Main Street are eligible for inclusion, except any municipally-owned property. City Hall, the senior center, is not eligible for any funding. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
All right. And can you, in your packet is Resolution Seven, we have to disregard that. There's a new resolution, it's almost verbatim, but it's, it's in front of you, if you would pass that on, right there.
Is this one right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mike can explain, uh, why we have to do this.
Sure, so, again, OKRA's got, um, their own set of very specific pieces of paper they want followed, and this is one of their resolutions, and they wanted it to look like this, and there was some, I think there was maybe just a couple sentences different, but, uh, I didn't want there to be any, anything to jeopardize us getting a grant, so I wanted to be a hundred percent safe rather than sorry, so, if you read it, it says everything the same, exact same, except, uh, there's like two sentences different, and I'm not sure it really changed what the intent was.
So, we'll close the public hearing and go to new business. Uh, the Resolution Number Seven, two thousand seventeen, is up for approval this evening concerning, uh, OKRA Planning Grant, and at this time, I'll ask the deputy clerk to read the resolution into the record, please.
Resolution authorizing application submission and local match commitment. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, authorizing the submittal of the CDBG Planning Grant Application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and Addressing Related Matters. Whereas, the Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, recognizes the need to stimulate growth and to maintain a sound economy within its corporate limits, and whereas the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, as amended, authorizes the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to provide grants to local units of government to meet the housing and community development needs of low and moderate income persons, and/or the elimination of blight, and whereas the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, has conducted or will conduct public hearings prior to the submission of an application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, said public hearings to assess the housing and public facilities and economic needs of its low and moderate income residents. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, that one, the mayor is authorized to prepare and submit an application for grant funding to address planning for improvements to the, the City of Beach Grove's downtown area, and to execute and administer a resultant grant, including requisite general administration and public management contracts and agreements pursuant to the regulations of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and the United States Department of In, Housing and Urban Development. Two, the City of Beach Grove, Indiana hereby commits the requisite local funds in an amount of four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, in the form of two hundred and, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars from the general fund, and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars from the redevelopment commission as matching funds for said program. Such commitment is contingent upon receipt of CDBG funding from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, adopted by the City Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, this first day of May, twenty seventeen, at seven fifteen P.M.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
Well, I like, uh, the new one, actually, kind of makes it clear on what the, uh, RDC is responsible for, and, and what the, uh, the city is, so, I think, uh, something what we discussed in our last meeting, so that's, that's a good thing.
If there's not any, uh, questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the, uh, Resolution Number Seven, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. That concludes, uh, new business this evening. Uh, council comments, beginning on my left. Buddy?
I just wanna, uh, thank, uh, Dan and Suzy for throwing your name in the hat like good citizens. I, I mean that sincerely. It's something that I hadn't really thought about, just, uh, the whole idea of, sometimes I'll have names up here of someone I, I've never even heard of, and, um, and then you got ones that, uh, different people are bragging to you about and so forth, and that's a good, a good feeling. Um, I wanted to make a, a comment about, when Terry's here, about, uh, opiate-type drugs. I, I, I know how they affect the fire, how they affect the police, how they affect families, um, hospitals, and, uh, crime, and anything else that goes with it. It's just, it gets bigger and bigger, and an opportunity to bring that to our minds today was, uh, was a, just a, a good thing, as far as the information. It's not, definitely a good thing, those that are addicted. Um, and, uh, with that, I wanna thank, uh, those that spoke tonight, and like, uh, with Joe coming up here and giving us some information as well. I guess I go on and on, but with that, just, uh, thank everybody for being here tonight.
Jim?
I'd also like to thank Dan and Suzy. I've, I've known Dan for a hundred and two years, I think, we played softball against each other. Uh, I know, got to know Suzy quite well, and her being the business person on, uh, City of Beach Grove. I, uh, I, like Dan, I'd like to put both of them on there, most definitely. I thank Mike for his comments, appreciate all that, thank you, Davis. I won't be here at the next meeting, I'm gonna be on vacation, so, thanks for being here.
Need a break at a hundred and two.
Uh, thank everyone for coming, and thank, uh, Dan and Suzy for putting their names in. I know Dan and I had talked about it quite some time ago, and, uh, uh, there'll be other things, I guess, come along, and I'll throw your name in the hat again. Thank you.
Uh, just, Joe and Chris, I mean, I think it's exciting what you guys are doing. Um, I think everybody kinda looks to, you know, we always bring up Fountain Square, about they kinda struck, struck gold, you know, with, you know, the redevelopment and everything, so, nobody knows what that magic formula is, um, but hopefully you guys are, you know, trying to find out what it could be for Beach Grove. Um, I was raised by, uh, business in Beach Grove, Main Street, you know, it was, uh, something that I've been a part of my entire life, so it's exciting, you know, to see what you guys are gonna do, so I look forward to it.
I wanna thank the parks that going, greeting, Beach Grove was a great success, it was a fun time, uh, people getting together, passing out trees, kids excited about growing, and, uh, celebrating earth and what we can do for our community, so let's keep going, community together. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for, to Dan and Suzy for both applying. Uh, I agree with Dan, wish we could use both. Certainly, Dan stayed engaged, 'cause there'll be more opportunities, I guarantee you.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming. Thank you to Dan and Suzy both for putting your names out there.
All right, I have, uh, several things for you, council. Um, first in your packet was, or, I passed it out tonight.
Oh, yes.
It was a chart that looked some, something like that, and it says, uh, Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization. This is for budgeting purposes for next year. Um, this is the invoice, and then listed below are some other things that are vital that we maintain our presence in, so when we start talking about budget, uh, later on this year, these figures will come back up. Um, the Hoosier State, uh, this is the first year that I can remember that, uh, the budget that was, uh, signed by the governor included, uh, funding for the Hoosier State. Uh, that's good news, um, and, uh, hopefully that will continue. So, uh, this is just an update for your information. Uh, this Saturday at, uh, from eight to noon, uh, at the police and fire station on Churchman, it's a blood drive for Indiana's fallen officers. It, that should've been in your packet as well, but, uh, public's invited to donate blood. Uh, there's been a lot of time spent on, uh, House Bill Ten O Two, that is the road funding bill that the governor, I think he signed it today, maybe, I'm not sure. Uh, that's good news, uh, for, uh, local government, and certainly good news for us. Uh, ninety, there's over ninety-five thousand local roads and streets in Indiana, and ninety percent of them are in cities. So, uh, this, uh, bill will allow our LRNS budget to increase by twenty percent in two thousand nineteen. So, uh, that is very good news. The consumer might not like it because of added fees on car registrations and ten cents per gallon per gasoline, but this is good news for local government. And you know we have, uh, enough bad roads. And there's an email on House Bill Ten O Two, an update on that, should've been in your packet. Uh, also in your packet is a couple of, uh, articles concerning utility increases. Uh, one was, uh, power light, sixty-eight percent rate increase, and, uh, they were, the I U R C was sued, uh, by, uh, Consumer Coalition and several other groups, and the Indiana Court of Appeals rejected a challenge Wednesday to an Indiana power light rate increase. The court ruled Wednesday that it did not have the authority to order the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission to reconsider the rate hike, simply because it would impact some customers more than others. But that's in your packet for reading. And then Friday, council, uh, the, the Board of Works, um, had a meeting and passed a resolution concerning small cell tower structures. The last day of the legislature, uh, they approved Senate Bill Two Thirteen, which allows telecommunications companies to install small tell towers, small cell towers every thousand feet in a city. And they gave local municipalities five days to pass a resolution to either prohibit it or stymie it. And that was very unfair. It was a very unfair bill. Uh, the Board of Works passed a resolution on Friday to, um, establish a, uh, for lack of a better term, easement, uh, commission that prohibits this type of activity. And can you imagine a cell, a tal, a telephone pole with a cell tower every thousand feet gonna come down Main Street? That would just look so terrible. Um, I don't know, that just shows you the power of, uh, utility lobby, uh, to the legislature, but anyway, this affects everybody, and, uh, so now, what we've done is, uh, you can't put, you can, you pu, you can put them on existing telephone poles, but you can't add poles. So, that's something that we had to do, we had to have it in, they passed it, we haven't had to have it enacted by midnight, April the thirtieth, which was very, very unfair. And we, and... And with the five days, you had to advertise it two days before you met, so theoretically, it gave us three days to pass a rule, and it's just bad government. Anyway, that's, the National Day of Prayer is this Thursday at noon at the steps of City Hall. We invite everybody to attend. Any other comments? Yes, Deb?
On the blood drive, if anybody has ever had to have a transfusion, which I have had, please donate, because if somebody didn't donate, I wouldn't have had, been able to get the blood.
I say one thing, I wanna thank Debbie, forgot about that, for stepping in tonight, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
You got a little better-looking Dan, too.
Have to go far, me.
Sure.
Just about that sort thing, they said the lawyer was in on it. Last meeting, you said something about you got a contract with the, you know, that they can only go so much of an increase. Are you pursuing that also along with those other things that you mentioned?
I think that's one of the things the mayor was addressing.
That's what is being, that's what, that is what's gonna be looked into. Motion to adjourn.
Uh, Dan?
Yes, Dan?
Thank you all for your consideration.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Second. Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty P.M.